We're gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you for joining us tonight. Let's start with a roll call, please. All right, Ms. Grisemkowski.
I am here.
Mr. Demick.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Wiseman.
Here.
Ms. Cotter.
Here.
I am present. Ms. Dodd.
Here.
We have a form. All right, we have some special guests tonight to help us with the pledge of allegiance. So gentlemen, come on in. Please rise if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and our color guard are gonna stay. So I'm gonna make a friendly amendment that we're gonna move the veterans' recognition up. And after that, then, we'll do the rest of the approve of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we do your friendly amendment.
Thank you.
And I'll support that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So with that, we'll move on to Huron Valley Hero Veterans Recognition.
First, I'd like to extend a heartfelt thank you to the color guard from EAM Vets post 2006 for being here tonight and taking part in all of our veterans ceremonies across the district. You can step forward when I read your name. Dave Frederickson, Petty Officer, First Class, U.S. Navy, retired. Joe Salvia, Sergeant, First Class, former Michigan Army National Guard. John Robinson, Sergeant, former U.S. Army. Bill Brown, Corporal, former U.S. Marine Corps. David Moore, Specialist Five, former U.S. Army. Larry Shaver, Airman Second Class, former U.S. Air Force. Jerry Mantella, former U.S. Army. Dave Wagner, former U.S. Coast Guard. Dave Sisson, Specialist Four, former U.S. Army. Mike Willinggett, Specialist Four, former U.S. Army. And Paul Clover, former U.S. Army. Please give them a warm round of applause. Thank you again, and thank you for your service to our country. At this time, we would also like to take a moment to recognize and honor our Huron Valley Schools employees and their family members who have served in the armed forces.
Hi, I'm Sam Broome from Lakeland High School, and we would like to honor these veterans. From Lakeland High School, Everett Held, Jeff Held, Aaron Bell, Scott Carney, Thomas Carney, Michael Ellis, Jonathan View, Ian Perry, Charles Gale Perry, Tanu Mackey, David Miller.
Hi, I'm Sergeant Patel from Milford High School, and we'd like to honor the following veterans. From Milford High School, Ronald Mantella, James Michael Wenzing Senior, Victor Ruiz, James Michael Wenzing Junior, Bobby Ray Phillips, Christopher Riley, Emile Mazur, Mervyn Darnell, Brandy Baddisher, Jerry Kleesby, Richard Carlson, James Davis, Dean Caldwell, Travis Adams, Robert Vosk, and John Guston.
Hi, my name is Julia Lanham from White Lake Middle School. We would like to honor the following veterans. From Harbor High School, Scott Thomas Armstrong, Robert Gerard, Mary Ellen Gerard, Kenneth Kowalski, and Henry Egman.
Hi, I am Emma Stoneback from White Lake Middle School. We would like to honor the following veterans. From White Lake Middle School, Joe Karowski, Sylvester Peruski, Benjamin Peplinski, Roger Lloyd Ellinger, James Lloyd Ellinger, John Owen James Sir Senior, Benjamin Lloyd Ellinger, John Lindo, Terry Lee Ellinger, Raymond Johns.
From Mearr Middle School, Stefan DeVoren, Israel Sagnot.
Hi, I am Ethan Kirwin from Kurtz Elementary, and we would like to honor our following veterans. From Oxbow Elementary, Nancy McDougall, Daniel Allen, Douglas Spangler, Earl Warden, Patrick Allen, Robert Fitchpatrick, Robert Greenleaf, Kevin Ryan, Raymond Sinal, Andrew Sinal, Walter Brickman, Keith Brickman, and Ronald Zinger.
Hi, I am Blake Everett from Lakewood Elementary. We would like to honor the following veterans. From Lakewood Elementary, Tim Corber, George Williams, James Norrid, Donald Groden, Francis Matelak, Michael David Mac Junior, John David Clements, John Michael Rogers, John Joseph Mac Junior.
Hi, I'm Winnie Lloyd from Lakewood Elementary. From Highland Elementary, Bradley Harts.
Hi, I am Hannah from Kurtz Elementary. We would like to honor our following veterans. From Kurtz Elementary, Ryan Gerwald, Mark Schimmett.
From Country Oaks, we have Marvin Spring and Robert Spring.
From Spring Mills Elementary, Paul Ballyard, George J. Westfall, George E. Westfall, Laura Leetsaw Richmond, Ashton Wills, Jasmine Schmiercock, Robert Souders, Christopher Wills.
From Apollo Center, Vicki Lewis, Robert Lewis, Neil Fargo, Charlie Baio, Raymond Hamilton, and Armando Metal.
Hi, I'm Reagan Todd from Milford High School. We would like to honor the following veterans. From Central Office, James Low Junior, James Low Senior, Joseph Toth, Lawrence Hedwig, Brad Roberts, Eric Russell, Michael Low, Jessica DeFrain, Richard Palmer, William Morecki, Joe Davies. From Transportation, John Schimmets, Caleb Holtman, Jamie Moose.
And from the Board of Education, Murray Adrian Cotter, David Jones, Wilfred Wiseman, Albert Petroni, James W. Fields, James W. Fields Junior, James C. Fields, Lincoln Varney, and Jacob Demick. Thank you for your service.
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 And those names aren't easy. And our color guards can be dismissed at this time? And the rest of you can be seated. Barb, I gotta do the agenda real quick. Oh, yep. Yep. So we have our agenda that we need to approve, and we do need to make some edits to this agenda before we approve it. So under unfinished business, we will be removing B, bus purchases. We have resolved that, and we do not need to have that on the agenda tonight. And then, under new business, we're gonna add a D, and it's a 31AA discussion and resolution. So, and that will be voted on this evening. Can I have a motion to amend the agenda? So moved. Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can we do a roll call vote, please? Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Grisemkowski.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, now we'll... Oh, I forgot that I wanted to change one other thing on the agenda, so I have to do another motion to amend the agenda, to move the president's comments, items from the board president, from A all the way down to between C and D. So we're able to get through the next few presentations before we break it and do something else. Can I have a motion to do that, please?
I'll make a motion to do that.
I'll support that one.
Thank you very much. Let's do another quick roll call vote. Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Ms. Grisemkowski.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right. Next, our next hero, after our veterans, we have more. That's great.
Tonight, we are honored to recognize someone that has given generously to the Huron Valley School District for many years, not only through countless hours of time and dedication, but also through remarkable financial contributions made possible by his Village Elves charity. Mr. Greg Brainer founded Village Elves in 1997, and under his leadership, it has grown tremendously. What began as a small local effort has blossomed into a community-wide mission, bringing together hundreds of volunteers to support families in need throughout the year. Through Village Elves, Huron Valley students have received assistance with fees for extracurricular activities. The organization has also provided full meal packages for Thanksgiving and Christmas dinners, along with toys for families in need, even including special sensory toys for students in our special education programs. And the list of amazing things the elves have done for our community goes on and on. As Mr. Brainer prepares to move to Florida, where he won't be dealing with this very cold weather we have, and passes the reins of Village Elves to new leadership, we want to take this moment to express our deepest gratitude. If Board Trustee Amy Grisemkowski, along with Mr. Greg Brainer, can join me for the special recognition.
Come on up here, sir.
Mr. Brainer, on behalf of the Huron Valley School Board, I'd like to present you with this certificate, which really does seem pale in comparison to all that you have done for our community. As a school district, we pride ourselves on being in being concerned about the whole child. And because of the work that you do with the Village Elves, we can absolutely believe that the whole child is being cared for. So thank you for that. Here's our certificate, as well as our Huron Valley coin. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would like to say, we could have never have done this without the Huron Valley social workers. All of you, the counselors, principals, all have been instrumental in helping the Village Elves grow over the years. In fact, our pay to participate, Lindsey Cotter, who I'm looking at, along with Kevin McKenna, principal of Milford High School, helped us develop that. I could go on and on with who and from what school helped us create what we now have. And the most important thing in my world is that every child smiles and does not feel inferior to their peers. Thank you. This is a true honor. And Todd, we haven't met yet, but I have something for you.
Impromptu moment, Todd.
I have $1020 gift cards to Matty's Fresh Market for you and the social workers to find families who are in current need of assistance feeding their families.
Great, fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before you go anywhere, I just want to give an opportunity for anybody else on the board that has any comments or questions.
I've lived in the village now for probably over 20 years, and one of the first people I met was Greg Brainer. And he had, he was recruiting people and cash donations to help with his program. And through a group of friends, I started making contributions because of everything that he has done. He has certainly been a conduit to all of our social workers. In turn, they recommend children and families that need the help. The Village Elves have helped out families that I have indicated in the past. And it's because of Greg's work and everything that he does that we've been able to help so many people. He can't be replaced. He's been an asset to our village of Milford and Huron Valley Schools. Greg, thank you very much. I'm gonna miss you, but enjoy the move.
And bless you. And again, I could have not done it without the staff and people who support Huron Valley Schools. They made this happen.
I think Cotter and Amy did it, yes? All right, thank you so much. We appreciate it. One more round of applause. Happy Thanksgiving. Usually, we have a whole gaggle of kids that we say, "We know you have homework, and you probably need to go." And so, anyone who's already participated, who would like to leave, you are welcome to go. All right, so next on our agenda, school presentations, but I don't think we have any this evening. So we'll move on to items from the board president. And I'm gonna start with just reminding everyone about public comment. As a school board, we appreciate the members of our community who share their public comments during designated times in our meeting agenda. This is an opportunity for the Board of Education to hear from the community. However, it is not a time for two-way communication. A regular meeting of the Board of Education is designated for the board to conduct business of the Huron Valley Schools in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Comments that require follow-up investigation or communication will be handled by the superintendent or members of the administrative team. There are two segments in our agenda for public comments, Section 3 and 7 respectively. 15 minutes has been allocated in Section 3 for public comments related to action or voting items, or non-action items, if time allows. The Board of Education will allocate more than the 15 minutes allocated in Section 3 so that all public comments on action-voting items may be heard during Section 3 prior to the board voting on those items. All comments on non-action items will take place during Section 7 of the agenda, if not already heard in Section 3. All speakers wishing to address the board must be present. All individuals will be given an opportunity to speak. Each individual delivering public comment will have three minutes to share their communication. Individuals may only speak once and cannot share their unused time with another person. A timer will be displayed on the screen so individuals can monitor their time. Once three minutes have elapsed, a timer will sound indicating the public comment has concluded, and the microphone will be turned off in preparation for the next speaker. The individual must be present... We already said that, I should delete it. We ask that you share your name and homeschool district before sharing your comments. Furthermore, we request that you refrain from name-calling or mentioning the names of specific employees, persons, or students within your public comments. Comments must be related to school business and may not include personal attacks unrelated to school business. If you make such a comment, the Board of Education president will, to the extent permitted by the First Amendment, interrupt or end your comment time. If you care to share public comments, please complete the form at the back of the room and give your comment form to Ms. Cadell, seated to the left. My left, your right. Yes, we're in a different room. Thank you for your professionalism and partnership. All right, now I have to pull something else up. Give me just one minute. All right. So we have Veterans Day tomorrow, and it is always a real highlight in Huron Valley Schools to be able to honor the veterans. I've been around the county and around other places, and no one does it quite like Huron Valley Schools. So if there are veterans out there who you know and love, make sure they know that tomorrow is a great day to be in the valley, and there are lots of activities happening, and veterans are welcome to participate in any of them. We appreciate the veterans who came in this evening. They are always willing to show up at a moment's notice, raise a flag, and share their stories with our community, and we're fortunate to have their partnership. We salute veterans, and we... My daughter asked, "Why does she have to go to school on Veterans Day?" And I don't have to go to work on Veterans Day. And I said, "The big reason that you have to go to school is because your... Our job is to teach you about Veterans Day and teach you about the honor, sacrifice, and service of the people who have served our country." And I think in Huron Valley Schools, we really do that. I was talking with a veteran the other day who said, "Don't just thank us for our service, ask us about our service." So that's the one thing I would encourage you to do tomorrow, is if you have some time to spend with a veteran, that you don't just thank them for their service, but you ask them about their service so you can learn about those sacrifices and the honor and the things that they learned while they were serving. Next, a few weeks ago, we had our very first Student Support Services, also known as Special Education, strategic plan meeting. This was a great meeting. You will hear more about the Student Support Services strategic plan as we go. What I want to do is thank the 40-plus educators and parents who took the time out of their evening to come together and help us figure out the best plan forward for the Student Support Services department. They are all people who have busy lives, other things to do, children to attend to. And they spent two hours with us in the LGI, talking about and learning about what do we need to do? How can we strengthen and make a really great plan going forward? So I appreciate those folks for giving their time. Dr. Salas said they recommended us having a committee of 10, and we don't do things that way. We do it the Huron Valley way, and we had a committee of 40, and a very functional committee of 40. So thank you to everyone who took the time to do that. So, thank you to everyone who took the time to do that. Also, a few weeks ago, the board had an opportunity to attend the Michigan Association of School Boards Annual Conference. At those conferences, we are able to take board certification classes. I don't remember what level we're at, Denise. What is it called? We're not an honor board. We're a...
We're Level 2.
We're a Level 2, which means we've all taken the base-level classes plus additional classes?
Standard of Excellence.
Standard of Excellence. And we do that because we believe in continuing our education as board members, just as much as we believe in the education of the children. So, during the conference, we were able to take board member certification classes. Those classes for the board members who attended included one about the Open Meetings Act, Budget Anonymy and Shortfalls, Managing Construction Projects, Leading with Purpose, Media Relations, Practical Advocacy, Focusing on Feedback, Consensus Leadership, Practical Governance, and Leveraging Feedback. So, all over the spectrum, from running meetings to managing building projects, to watching the budget, to advocating for our students. So, it was a very busy time, and we learned from a lot of wonderful folks. Outside of those certification classes, we also had clinic sessions where we could go and actually learn from, in one-hour sessions, from different schools about what they're doing. Dr. Salah and Ms. Rothler came up and presented about, hold on, I wrote it down, so I had the right name, "Enhancing School Safety: A Comprehensive Approach in Today's School District." And they were very well received. I know Barb's already gotten quite a few calls from a lot of the folks who were in the room, so they could hear some of the practical things we do. Sometimes, we think that things are kind of standard and rote, and then we go to a conference like that, and we realize that it really is beneficial for all of us to learn from each other. Other clinic sessions that we participated in included topics like AI in the classroom, AI in a school board, school safety, understanding flexibility and graduation requirements, embracing innovation, alternative education and courts partnership, and board roles and improving student outcomes. So, very useful and functional time for all of us, not only to be together as a board team, but also to learn from the successes, failures, mistakes, and quandaries of other school districts. So, we appreciate that, and we know that it is important for us to continue our learning, just like it's important for every person in our district to continue their learning. All right. Next, I'm going to read you some minutes. Boy, I'm really thrilling the crowd tonight with my board comments. We had a board study session on November 6, 2025. Usually, these minutes would just be approved in our consent agenda, but we talked about some important things, and we thought it was important to talk about that. So, I'm gonna fill you in on what happened there. So, the board study session was held here at the LGI on November 6. We started the meeting promptly at 5:00 p.m. Present were myself, Ms. Cotter, Ms. Pistana, Mr. Wiseman, Ms. Grzemkowski, Ms. Ryan, and Mr. Dimick, as well as the coat team and a few other special guests. We approved the agenda. Everyone voted yes. I'm not gonna read some of that stuff. Unfinished business, so we did have a presentation by Ben Dowker, principal at Harbor High School, provided an overview of the yonder pouch cellphone pilot currently being implemented at the school. Dr. Salah presented updates to the administrative guidelines for the personal communication devices for discussion with the board. These guidelines will be introduced under new business at the November 10 meeting this evening. The revised guidelines are scheduled to take effect at the start of the second semester of the 25-26 school year, January 20, 2026. Next, we moved on to White Lake Middle School renovations and new middle school design. Bill Weinrock from TMP Architecture shared the schematic designs for White Lake Middle School renovations and the district's new middle school, highlighting features of each project. Next, we talked about construction phasing and timeline. Mike Miller, representing Clark Construction, updated the board on the progress at White Lake Middle School and outlined the anticipated timeline for groundbreaking and construction of the new middle school, which is set to begin in the summer of 2026. Sale of bonds, it was moved by Treasurer Wiseman and supported by Vice President Cotter that we would discuss that this evening. We also decided to table our board goals because time just ran away from ourselves. So, we'll be doing that at our executive meeting. Finally, we discussed 31AA. And I don't know if it says it in here, but 31AA is a part of the Michigan School Aid Budget. There's the general budget, and then there are all sorts of supplemental things they add to the budget, which are named things like 31AA and et cetera. So, 31AA is one that we're paying special attention to, and I'm gonna read this. Dr. Salah provided a detailed strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis of the three legal opinions we've received regarding the Section 31AA of the school aid budget. Section 31AA is the section of the school aid budget that provides safety, security, and mental health monies to the Hereon Valley Schools. Dr. Salah shared that the Michigan Legislature and the governor are violating the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments of the Constitution by requiring school districts to waive rights in order to receive funding. This segment of the School Aid Act is unethical and illegal. Dr. Salah shared that a lawsuit was forthcoming, and the board discussed interest and benefits to signing on. The board and administration discussed the importance of the following Constitution and protecting our schools from safety and security perspective and addressing the inappropriate government overreach of our state. The meeting was adjourned at 8:03 p.m., and today, you noted in the discussion of our agenda, we've added a discussion about 31AA near the end of our agenda in new business. So, if you're interested in hearing the discussion about that, I'm sure we will have a lively discussion about 31AA and what our next steps will be as a district while we contemplate what to do with this, with these monies. So, stay tuned for that. And with that, I will complete my comments from the board president. Next on our agenda is superintendent communication.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening to everybody who's here with us. I have three items for our listening audience today. First and foremost, I just want to give a shout-out to all who participated in the Empty Bowls Project, which is a fundraiser for community sharing. Community sharing is an organization in the Highland community that provides food, rent supports, and a tremendous amount of resources for those in our community that have, that have needs. And this time of year in particular, the needs tend to grow. So, if you have the resources, if you are willing, and if you are interested, Community Sharing is always willing to take your donations and seek your support. And I'm just grateful for everyone that was there. I had the opportunity to serve soup for three hours. It was a lot of lobster bisque, but I hear it was very good. And it was really a great time. Had an opportunity to see a lot of community members, and I always enjoy that event, and it's an opportunity to giving back. Also, I would echo some of President Dodd's comments regarding 31AA. We are going to spend a little bit of time having that discussion. I do want to thank the board. I mean, many in the community, you know, don't necessarily know. Our board members are not paid to be board members. They volunteer a lot of time. So, we spent three hours last week digging pretty deep on a variety of topics, cellphones, which has been a topic of discussion over the last 18 months or so as a school district. And then, this 31AA categorical line item is of particular interest to us as a school community, because it's about $1 million to the Hereon Valley Schools. Yet, our legislature is not just providing us those dollars as they have done for years. Now, they're, they want to provide those dollars with strings attached, which include us waiving the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment rights of our employees, of our students, of our board, all for nebulous, ambiguous terminology that doesn't have a sunset and is really quite convoluted. So, we'll talk more about this lawsuit potential later on in the agenda, but I do want to thank the board for that discussion. It was very robust and really appreciated your insights. Finally, personal communication devices and cellphones. We forewent a school presentation today because we have the proud principal of Harbor High School here with us, Mr. Ben Dowker, and he is going to spend some time walking through a presentation. While Mr. Dowker is making his way to the podium, I just, I just want to remind everyone that we've been talking about personal communication devices since October of 2024. You know, we engaged as a, as a district in a book study, our board team with the book, Anxious Generation, and we've had several discussions since October 2024 to today. And one of the steps that we agreed to take was a pilot with some personal communication devices, cellphone restrictions or limitations at Harbor High School to gather some data, to gather some information, really get a sense of how that might work in one of our smaller high schools. So, Mr. Dowker is going to spend some time talking about yonder pouches, which is one approach that can be used as a tool for restricting PCDs, but is not the only approach. So, you know, the guideline that we're going to talk about later on in the agenda does not name yonder pouches specifically. However, it is one really effective tool that our high school, Harbor, has implemented to manage this conversation. So, with that, Mr. Dowker, I'm gonna toss you the football and let you take, take it from here.
Sure. I'm gonna keep it short, but I think I got a lot of information for you guys to look at today. But first, I wanna, I wanna talk a little bit about the journey, and this slide really captures the journey at Harbor High School. Our staff, at the end of each year, get together and talk a little bit about what we want the next year to look like, or what some of the challenges are in our building and how we might address those. And so, at the end of June 2024, our staff did that and recognized that cellphones in our building were an issue and a challenge, a challenge for engagement with our students. And so, we set out to address that. Next, we spent a majority of the next year researching best practices and trying to figure out what are the different ways that other folks have managed this issue across our state and our, and our country. And in February of '25, we decided that we were gonna go with the yonder pouches, which I'll show you guys tonight. Once we figured out that we were gonna go with yonder pouches, we thought, "Well, we don't really want to pay for them, so how are we gonna get that paid for?" Harbor High School is a CSI school. We have access to grant funds through Oakland Schools, and so, we applied for a grant and got our yonder pouches paid for, because nobody likes to pay for anything, so we might as well get it paid for. Next, we took a look at how we were gonna implement this, and we wanted to roll it out slowly. We wanted to make sure all of our stakeholders, our students, our families, our teachers, our staff, they all understood exactly how we were going to do this and that we gave them a lot of advance notice, and we gave them a lot of opportunities to answer questions or ask questions and give us their concerns before we implemented this the following school year. So, we developed a frequently asked questions page, which we posted online and supplied, hard copied, every one of our parents at parent-teacher conferences. We rolled out a policy about how we might implement this if there were challenges. And then, we, we developed three different forms of communication to each one of our different stakeholder groups, and then sent those out repeatedly before the start of the 25-26 September school year. So, we are in November. It feels weird saying that, because it feels like it happens so fast. But we started this in September of this year, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about how it's been going. So, just a few things to consider. These, these first few slides are just conversation points, really, about how often our youth and us, to be frankly, access electronic devices and how often we take a look at them throughout the day and how they might be a distraction. So, I won't read all of that for you, but just give you an opportunity to take a peek. This I want to highlight a little bit. If you look at the news and you look up different news articles about the restricting of personal electronic devices across our nation, it seems like every week you look at it, and there's another school district or another state who's doing something similar. So, Michigan is having this conversation right now, and we're having this conversation right now, so it's very apt. There are a lot of reasons to consider cellphone use in schools and why we might want to reduce it. This quote right here kind of captures a little bit more of it, other than just engagement. When thinking about it as an educator, I'm thinking about contact time with my instructors. How much are my students getting? Are they getting all of it? Are they getting distracted? Are they learning everything they should be taking in, and do they have that opportunity? And we, can we change that? So, I'll read this one. This one's by Jonathan Hattie, and he says, "Cellphone bans are in place in 77% of schools, but a high number of schools tells students that they should not use their phone while in class. That's not a reality of ban. It's more of an unenforceable wish." And so, this is just trying to capture the idea that we tell our students every day, "Don't use your cellphones," and then the teachers become the police of that, that cellphone ban in schools. And it's really burdensome, because that is solely on the educator when they're trying to deliver content. They're also trying to look at 30 different kids in their classrooms whether or not they're using cellphones. So, we decided to go with Yonder, and there's a short, three-minute video right here that we're gonna play. That kind of captures exactly what we're doing.
By removing access to phones, yeah, we've seen a complete change.
Students are able now to not be distracted by their devices, and so, they're engaging with each other more.
This year, we're piloting a program by Yonder. It's a pouch that students put their electronic devices in, and then they're pouched up throughout the entire school day, and they don't have access to their personal devices, but they have them on their person to, to make sure that they're safe and secure. But it eliminates access to those electronic devices throughout the entire school day.
The whole classroom has changed. The phones were such a distraction, such a reliance. The students are seeing each other differently, engaging each other more, and it's really opening up all kinds of things now in the classroom for us.
One of the things I remember hearing within that first week is we had a student who was un-pouching at the end of the day, taking their devices out of their pouch, and they mentioned that when they looked at their screen, they had 152 notifications. That's 152 times during the school day that they would have looked down at their phone, seen something that they wanted to respond, disengaged from the content that's going on around them, engage, and then reengage, and they're gonna lose learning time.
It makes us communicate a lot better with other students. We had the phones. It was more of a distraction. We're not getting our work done.
And I think the first week and a half was a little bit of an adjustment for our students, but now it's just normal.
We're reading a mystery novel, and I've taught it before, but this time, the students are just coming up with theories left and right. We're tracking clues, and they are just so engaged in it, and it really has made teaching that novel a lot more fun for me. I think that with having the yonder pouches, students are not able to withdraw into themselves and just stare at their phone and not engage with others.
I see in the classroom that kids are awake and engaged.
It's make me focus more on school than on my phones. It gets me to the point where I can get work done, ask for help from others instead of using my phone.
Now, you walk into the lunchroom, and everyone is talking with everyone else. And that, that sense of belonging and care and that relationship building has been something that we've seen more this year than any other year.
Just seeing kids talk in the hallway more, building better relationships, actively engaging in conversation, or I've used card games in the lunchroom. They've really enjoyed that. Just spending time working on those social skills and social interactions, been very, very positive.
More students raising their hand, less missing assignments, and the grades have improved immensely just from having those yonder pouches to keep their phones from distracting them.
All my classes are passing this year.
That's awesome.
God will have my phone on me.
Yonder pouches have made a huge difference in my classroom.
So, we're gonna talk a little bit about how the day looks and how it works. And so, you'll see right there on the screen, a little bit of a, think about this, the lock, kind of like those magnetic locks you have on your clothing when you go to purchase it at a store. There's a magnet that they place it on to open it back up. So, they put all their electronic devices in there, and when I say all of them, I mean all the things that could be Bluetooth-enabled or access the internet. So, we're really looking at AirPods, smartwatches, cellphones. We don't allow our students to bring in personal electronic devices, laptops, those kinds of things. And so, everything that they would get in the school day, we provide to them, and everything that they shouldn't be having access to, we put in the pouch. And everything that they shouldn't be having access to, we put in the pouch. So at the end of the school day, as you can see in this short video up there, you press it against that magnet. There's two different kinds of magnets, that handheld version and then one that you saw on the video that was on the wall. And I, I initially at first had some reservations about how many of those we need to put out. Because I wasn't sure how quickly the students would be able to get the pouch out. Unlock it and get their things out of the pouch and then get on the bus or get out to the car. It's fast. It, it actually got faster week by week because they really wanted those things. This is a kind of a representation of the entrance and exit at Harbor High School. So all of them are in little holders and they're identified by number and color. And each student has an identified pouch. They're responsible for it, any damage to it, they have to fix or pay for. And they use the exact same pouch every single day. And then at the end of the school day, they un-pouch and throw them into bins. And then we reorganize them like in that picture for the start of each day. There are two ways to do this, like we're doing it now, where students don't take these things home. And they keep them right in the building and then we reorganize them and then reissue them every single day. Or you could have students bring these home with them and then bring it in just like they bring any other piece of equipment to school that they, that is required. These are the things that we're looking at, that we're really kind of curious to see the needle move a little bit on. A reduction in overall discipline. As an administrator, I would say, looking back on last year or years past, half of the discipline that I, I handle. Has something to do with cellphone use or online use that is inappropriate. And the other half is behaviors in the school building itself. And this year I've had, and I should knock on some wood, but I'm not going to because that'll be loud up here. One disciplinary referral this year because of inappropriate cellphone use or online content. Last year at this time, it would have been a lot more than that. And so that, I can tell you just anecdotally, is definitely a lot better. Well, we want to improve the number of students passing classes, that's our ultimate goal. We're a credit recovery and, and getting our kids to the finish line as quickly as possible and helping them succeed and get a diploma. So that's ultimately our goal, is to have more of those. Right now, anecdotally, those next two ones too, grades over, overall are way better this year than they were last year. We have more students on our honor roll week to week than we ever did before. And our teachers are reporting more passing grades in all of our classes. So our trimester ends on the twenty first of November and we start a brand one, new one on the first of December. So I'm anticipating when we get the final numbers in, that we'll see an uptick. How much? I'm not sure. I'm excited to see though. And then you guys saw the, the, the video, student engagement is, is just night and day compared to what it was previous to this. This is a quote by my art teacher right now. He never taught as a teacher without cell phones, never. And I asked him after the first week, I said, how's it going? And he said this, it's night and day. It's a total change in his class. Right now he's teaching a three D art and design class and there are, there are pieces of that class that he would have saved for an advanced class. But he's getting into that content now because the students are more engaged. And they're, they're working harder and they have more interest and more curiosity in the subject and he's getting further along. So that is the presentation in a nutshell, does the board have any questions for me?
Take it away. This is a great presentation, thank you Ben. I'm very excited, as I told you, I'm very excited to see this social experiment, if you will. What it provides us. I'm very curious about the student engagement. One of the, I do some hiring in my position. I've hired students from Harbor, they've been exceptional employees. But one of the things I'm finding with a lot of incoming employees is not having soft skills. Not being able to communicate, not being able to problem solve verbally. Not maybe being able to address other adults in a way that is appropriate. So I'm kind of curious to find out how the cellphone policy might change that and how it might flip the script a little bit. But the other piece of it is, we also use a lot of innovation and a lot of technology. Many people utilize their cell phones for that technology. What are the other things that you're doing at Harbor that utilize technology? That still give them the ability to have those conversations? But also the ability to innovate and be part of this technology boom that we're in?
That's a good question. Technology, this is an area where we had to kind of adapt a little bit. Because there are a lot of projects and a lot of things that are students, our teachers were using that were relying on personal electronic devices previously. That we've had to shift a little bit. And also we wanted to make sure that our, our Chromebooks were being used appropriately during the school day. So we got Go Guardian training for every single staff person to assist with that. And then we have carts of Chromebooks at Harbor High School. And those are moved around room to room to integrate into our classrooms. And then Annie Zambito, she was pictured in the video. She does video classes for Harbor High School, which is technology heavy. And she put in a grant this year to get some additional devices to help out with that. Because before she may have had students use their electronic devices to shoot, shoot short videos or take pictures. Or do all these different things that everyone had a phone for. But now we have to pivot and we might need some different technology for that.
Sorry, I was multitasking.
That's okay.
Other questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Weisman.
Yeah, just a general comment. I would like you on behalf of the board to express our appreciation for your staff and the leadership that they've taken in this. I know that it's, it's, it's another piece, but it's an important piece. I think reflecting, Dr. Sala and I had an opportunity to talk to a number of your, your teachers a few weeks ago. And the enthusiasm they showed and is confirmed in your presentation. They see the, the increase in, in focus. They see the increase as it relates to students talking to students. The fact that it's really driven home that collaboration that they, they look for. And I think it's also, it would be amiss if I didn't say thank you on behalf of the board to the community. Because without the passage of the bond issue, we wouldn't have the opportunity to provide the technology that's necessary. In the, in the, in the systems that are in place. So we have the funding to be able to do those types of things because it's one step at a time. And the time is ripe as it relates to this and it really creates that focus that all students need. So please pass on our, our congratulations and our appreciation and our respect to your staff.
I will, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
No, we, when we, I just want to recap a little bit, our discussion at our study session. So there were lots of questions about, are the kids respectful to their yonder pouches? Are there students who, you know, are they durable, et cetera? There's been some breakage, we've had some creative students who have worked on getting into those pouches. Talk to me about what happens when the rules are broken and when the pouches are broken.
Okay. So we developed that policy like I showed you at the first slide and then we rolled that out to all of our stakeholders. So the first part of this was communication. And we didn't come up with that policy on our own. We asked yonder to get us in contact with a variety of other school districts utilizing their devices and then figure out what they did. So I'm not going to take credit for this. But the device policy that we modeled ours after is actually used in Novi Middle Schools right now. And so if a student doesn't have their phone or devices inside of their yonder pouch, that, those devices are handed to me. I call the parent. If the parent can come and pick them up by the end of the school day, then that's great, I'll give it back to the parent. If it can't, then I hold on to those devices until that parent can, sometimes during the next school day. And if they can't get up there by the end of the second school day, then I hand all that stuff back to the kiddo at three PM, which is our dismissal time on the second day. And always communicate with the parent when any of those things are happening. So that's how we enforce it if a student isn't using the pouch. If they, they vandalize the pouch in any way or they make it inoperable, then they got to pay for it. So the first pouch is paid for through the grant, but any replacement of it, they would have to pay for, which is thirty dollars, which we just put on as a fee. And then they pay us that amount. On the whole, I think in that first week and a half, we had several folks who decided they really wanted to have access to that yonder pouch. And may have ruined it. But then when word got around pretty quickly that it was thirty bucks a pop to have a cellphone conversation in the bathroom, then it kind of stopped. And now it's, it's very infrequent, over the last few weeks, we haven't had very many of those.
The other conversation we had, which was interesting to me, because we always think about acceptance at different levels in the community, right? So we know from surveying that our teachers are, are on board with support from administration. We know that most of the parents are on board, not all. And the students, depending on the grade level, are marginally on board. So as you were rolling this out, what sort of feedback did you get from parents and students as we were going? We talked about this a little bit, but I think it's important for, for people to hear.
I think it, well, I didn't hear any parent negativity about the yonder pouches until we began. And I think most of that is because this is a theoretical thing and then now it's actually affecting the day to day lives of our students. And so I think there were two things coming out of the parent group. One, they're worried about if there were a, an emergent situation that would cause them concern for the safety of their students. Or if there was a power outage or a gas leak or any sort of those emergencies that happen in schools. How do I get ahold of my kid immediately in that moment? And my response to those folks is, is that it's actually a lot safer. And a lot more efficient for our emergency personnel not to get a, a million phone calls, but just to get a select few. And so that was how I handled that. Also, we, we put one of the unlocking handheld devices into the security bag for each, each of our classrooms. So every single teacher in an emergency would have access to that, to asswatch that fear. And then also, one of the positives that I wasn't actually considering, I thought about it, but it actually turned out to be a, a great thing. And one of the positive things from our, our, our parent group was that they're not getting hassled. Our teenagers develop this desire to leave school sometimes and then to do that, they have to get parent permission to do that. And so they sometimes hassle their parents a lot until they sometimes get them to say, sure. That's gone. They could still do that, but it's a lot harder. They got to go down to the office and then get on the actual phone and call their parent using a number that they don't remember. And have to look it up and then call their parent and ask them if they could leave school early. And so there was a lot of love coming from the parents because that was no longer a thing. And so the parent group responded like that. The student group, I think the majority of them would have loved to have their cell phones in that first week. They just felt that I no longer have this thing that I use all the time to connect with the world around me and they were missing it. But then after the first week and a half, two weeks of school, they adapted just like everybody else adapted. And we didn't get the pushback and they, I think they value the time that they're getting now with their peers more than they used to. That kid that said that a hundred and fifty two notifications, I can't even imagine that. I had another student talk to me about the amount of FaceTime or screen time that that had and how much it had been reduced. And how much they didn't realize that they were using their devices and how maybe that wasn't such a good thing. The staff, as you saw in the video, are ecstatic. I think they're all thinking, why didn't we do this years ago?
All right, that's all from me, anybody else? Yes. Not to belabor the point, but your staff is also cellphone free, correct?
Our staff, well, all staff in Huron Valley is supposed to keep their phones away and out of use. And so that policy is, is happening in our building too. But we've, we've seen an uptick in just an understanding about how this is, not, it's not an us problem, it's not a student issue. This is an us problem. How many times do we look at our cell phones during the school day? How many times are those things important to our work or not important to our work? And so this work that we're doing with our young people is honestly something that we should consider a little bit more as adults.
Love it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ben, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. That was superintendent, anything else?
I'm, I'm all set, thank you, Mr. Dowker, appreciate you being here this evening.
All right, next we have student leadership.
Yep, tonight we have James Bottomley from, he's the representative from the IA West and he's going to tell us what's going on. Come on up, James. Thanks for being here.
There we go, thank you for having me here. I'm James Bottomley, I am a senior at the International Academy. And I have a few notes here about what I wanted to talk about tonight. Just a couple of weeks ago, our first quarter ended, which to me is quite crazy. We're already, you know, a quarter of the way down with the school year, which as a senior, absolutely wild. But looking at the future, I know later this week, we have our first enrollment night for the upcoming freshmen, this Thursday, I believe. And I'm very excited for that because I know this current freshman class is a lot bigger than some of the other classes are. We've got like a hundred freshmen currently and only like fifty seniors. So hopefully next year this trend can continue, we'll see more students attending the IA. Additionally, we've had several of our fall sports seasons wrapping up. I know I'm personally on the soccer team. We've also got students representing the tennis team, golf, football and several other sports. What I also like about that too is we've got kids playing sports for a variety of different schools. Like I was on the Lakeland soccer team, but I've got friends who played sports for Milford. And then also kids who are at South Line as well. So we've got a lot of diversity in regard to that. And then, I guess I don't have that many bullet points here, but one last thing I kind of wanted to touch on was. LVC leadership meeting that the IA hosted last week on Friday. I've been a part of the LVC leadership group since I was a freshman and I'm a big fan of it. But this last Friday, we got to make blankets for foster kids, which obviously a great cause. And also got to communicate with leaders from other schools, which again, I think is very beneficial. So that was, on the whole, a very good seminar there. Guess that's all I've got, so. Thank you.
Thank you, James, we appreciate it. And James, you're welcome to stick around, but you're also welcome to head, head home and do homework. Because I imagine it's piles of homework.
Oh yeah, a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Association communication.
Good evening, I'll go off script for just a minute. As a social worker in the district, I just want to reiterate the importance that we talked about with the Village Elves. Our social workers, I appreciated him calling us out, but we can't do what we need to do without them. So I've worked in the valley a long time, I'm sure before the Village Elves even started. But their addition has been priceless to what we need to do. So good evening, everyone. This is always an emotional meeting as we recognize, honor and celebrate the veterans in our own families and members of the Huron Valley community. On this day, I too recognize my father and father-in-law for their time in the army many years ago. In talking with them, they're proud of the time they've served our country and always willing to share their stories and experiences with the next generation. I want to specifically recognize the veterans within our own school, school community. Our dedicated educators, our staff members, our parents and guardians. And of course, our students who make the decision to answer the call of duty. Thank you for your service both to our country and our community. We value the unique perspectives that you bring back to us and our community is strengthened by the sacrifices you made. And we are forever grateful to your courage and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, board correspondence, do you have any correspondence to report this evening?
No correspondence tonight.
Okay, treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report, I really do not have anything. I'm going to turn it over under new business to Dr. Sala and Mr. Van Goghson as it relates to the sale of the twenty six school building in site bond series.
All right, thank you very much, looking forward to it. All right, reports from board committees, I will start off, I might start off. I'm not prepared to start off, I had it up and I lost it. All right, let's go ahead and start off with the TLT committee.
Okay. TLT committee met on October twenty second. The meeting was called to order at nine oh five. Present were myself, Ms. Carter, Ms. Grizimkowski, Dr. Nemeth, Dr. Sala, Mr. Endicott, Mr. Lindberg, Mr. Columbach. Ms. Chastain, Ms. Gilbert, Ms. Miska. um, James, who was just here, and Gabby. Um, she was representing Milford High. He represents the IA West. Uh, absent were Ms. Horowitz and Ms. Bjorkman, and a thank you to Ms. Cotter for taking our minutes during that meeting. Uh, there was no public comment, no unfinished business. For new business, we discussed the eye-ready fall results. Dr. Nemeth presented the fall eye-ready diagnostic results for grades one through eight in reading and math. The discussion was focused on students performing three or more grade levels below, emphasizing the need for a multi-tiered system of support and innovative scheduling to create additional time for staff to address the achievement gaps. The TLT team and building staff will continue to analyze eye-ready data as part of the district's balance assessment system to better target the students' needs. We discussed elementary and secondary grading practices. Dr. Nemeth and the teacher leaders, Ms. Chastain, Ms. Gilbert, and Ms. Miska, shared updates on district grading practices across elementary and secondary levels. Highlights included the introduction of the new elementary report card, as well as the development of a website and guidance documents to support staff and families. At the secondary level, Committee of Educators is studying and piloting best practices in grading at the middle and high school levels. This work is grounded in research and best practices aimed at promoting student motivation, accuracy, fairness, and clear communication. A draft vision and belief statements were presented along with examples of grading practices currently being explored through the collaborative inquiry groups. We discussed, uh, board policy updates. There were three board policies, twenty-two-ten, twenty-four-twelve, and eighty-three-oh-five, uh, which we took for review and updates and revisions. And we, that, they're actually presented tonight at the November tenth meeting. We will continue to discuss it this week as well. Uh, standing agenda items. Uh, there was nothing on strategic plan updates, nothing for safety and security, uh, nothing new about student support services. Under student leadership, Gabby shared feedback around student clubs meeting during seminar. She expressed student concerns regarding the change to before and after-school meeting times for clubs. Principals will commu- will be communicating to students that this decision is part of board policy and affects all non-school-sponsored clubs. Uh, James didn't have any new updates. The other item was the thirty-one AA. Dr. Sla presented legal opinions regarding safety, security, and mental health funds. The discussion highlighted potential legal implications for districts that chose to accept these funds. We adjourned at eleven-twelve. Our next meeting is this Wednesday, November twelfth, at eight-thirty in the morning at Administration.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna pop in here real quick and do the executive committee meetings that I, minutes that I found shortly after I gave up. Uh, our last executive committee meeting was October thirtieth at nine AM at the admin building. We started at nine oh five. Present were myself, Mr. Wiseman, Ms. Cotter, Dr. Sla, Ms. Cadell, and Ms. Rothler. Um, we did not have any public comment. Regular agenda. Uh, we discussed the November sixth board study session. The committee reviewed the agenda in anticipation for the numbers, the November sixth board study session. Next, we reviewed the agenda for the November tenth board meeting. Committee reviewed the agenda in anticipation for the meeting. Next, school safety and security. Barb Rothler shared that safety and wellness committee will be combined this year with the first meeting scheduled for November twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. That's Wednesday. They're welcoming many new participants and will provide a high-level overview of our current safety initiatives along with upcoming improvements for the year. Dr. Sla will review how safety and security efforts are funded and in the event of funding cha- in the event of funding changes in the future. Legislative and advocacy updates. I shared with the committee a desire to make community resources accessible for students and families, especially due to the government shutdown, and a discussion was had on ways the district can support these organizations. Uh, communication update. Ms. Rothler shared that there are no major updates on communication at this time. The team continues to focus on strengthening social media presence, and the printed newsletter will be mailed out to the community within the next week. That went out last week. Board policy update. Dr. Sla presented updates to board policies recommended by Neola for the committee's review. Also, uh, changes to thirty-one AA. Dr. Sla presented three legal opinions regarding the thirty-one AA, safety, security, and mental health funds. The discussion highlighted potential legal implications for districts that chose to accept these funds. This topic will be discussed at the full board meeting, uh, with the, by the full board at the November sixth study session. Board goals. The committee discussed potential board goals and will continue discussion and preparation for the study session. Policy review. Ms. Dodd asked the committee to review board policy one-four-two-two on nondiscrimination. The policy will be discussed at the November twentieth executive committee meeting to explore ways to possibly simplify. Uh, other, Dr. Sla praised the recent Student Support Services Strategic Plan Committee meeting, noting the smooth flow and successful planning of the event. Participants provided positive feedback, and the presenters were well-prepared and knowledgeable. The committee is moving in a strong direction and should have a plan in place within the next five to six months. I think we should say six to seven months, just to the audience to appreciate, based on the committee's outcomes. Dr. Sla shared that the multipurpose suites at Lak- at Lakeland should be ready within the next couple of weeks. He recommended holding off on moving board meetings to Lakeland until the suites are complete and suggested highlighting the opening at the December meeting with a ribbon-cutting event. So before our December meeting, there will be a ribbon-cutting, as long as all things go well, uh, at the new Lakeland multipurpose rooms. We adjourned at ten forty. Next meeting is November twentieth at nine AM at the Administration Building. Next, finance and operations.
Finance and operations met on Wednesday, November fifth, twenty-twenty-five, at four fifteen at the administrative offices, along with myself, Ms. Ryan, Mr. Dimick, Dr. Sla, Mr. Van Goghson, Mr. Rebe, Ms. Garrigan, and Miss- Mrs. Moore, and Mike Miller from Clark Construction, along with Bill Weinrock from TMP. Public comments, there were none. Review of the minutes, we reviewed the previous meeting of ten-fifteen-twenty-five minutes, and all, they were included within the eleven-seven-twenty-twenty-five board notes that we received. Regular agenda, there were no consent agenda items. Unfinished business, we reviewed, uh, and there were no further questions regarding bid pack, uh, pertaining to the data center bid, approval of the MNO pickup truck purchase. The committee had no further questions regarding that. Uh, another item that was discussed was the bus bus purchase of the, uh, two, uh, special needs buses. Uh, I'm very pleased to report that, uh, we do not have to have any further action regarding what was already approved by the board. Additional school safety purchases, the dis- district has utilized its original estimated amount approved by the board, including contingency, and is addition, asking for additional hundred thousand dollars to complete this work. The administration will seek approval at the, uh, November tenth, tonight's meeting. New business, we had a discussion regarding the sale of the twenty-twenty-six school building in site bond series, and that is also part of the agenda tonight. Dr. Sla, under safety and security, gathered legal opinions regarding thirty-one double A, uh, safety and security and mental health funds that, uh, President Dodd reported on. Uh, under other, bond construction update, Mike Miller from Clark Construction gave the committee updates on all current bid packs in the timeline. Administration building relocation update, Mr. Miller from Clark Construction also updated the committee on the construction progress and confirmed that they are still on track for completion in mid-March. The board will be invited to tour the new administration space after the holidays. Middle school, uh, schematic design update, uh, Wh- White Lake Middle School's bid is out on the streets. White Lake Middle School staff was given a presentation from our architects Tuesday, last Tuesday, and will do the same for the new middle school with the staff at Mirren the coming weeks. We also discussed year-to-date budget to actual. That's in front of us tonight. Uh, board goals, uh, I discussed and provided to finance and operations a potential goal as it related to our committee, and that will be presented and discussed at our exec meeting coming up in the future. Legislative update, the Supreme Court ordered the House to send bills previously passed by the past less, past legislation to the governor's office for consideration. Dr. Sla's concern is where it will land and what the ultimate outcome will be and the effect that it will have on Huron Valley school. Election date, bond proposals. Dr. Sla shared that approximately sixty-seven percent of bond proposals passed this past week on election day. Uh, South Lion passed a three-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bond issue. Novi passed a four-hundred-and-twenty-five-million-dollar bond issue. Lampier, uh, Lampier Schools also passed the film fifty-million-dollar bond issue. Uh, for future discussion, Dr. Sla spoke on another one of those categoricals, twenty-seven L, a specific section of the Michigan School Aid Act, which allocates funds for educator compensation. And we will be working on that through negotiations with our various groups. The meeting adjourned at five-twenty-eight PM. The next meeting will be held on December third at four-fifteen at the administrative offices.
Thank you. Ms. Grisimkowski, we haven't had a meeting.
We have not met, but we are meeting soon. So December second is our next meeting for the Ad-Hoc Committee for Student Support Services at two-thirty at the admin building. Goodness, I hope to see you there.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are moving into public comment. I do not have any public comments this evening on agenda items, so we'll be moving all the public comments into this section. As a reminder, um, everyone who is here was here when I read this earlier, so I won't do it again. Uh, but I'll remind you that, um, when you come up, each individual is given three minutes to share their communication. Um, there's gonna be a timer on the monitor. When the three minutes over, an alarm will sound, and your microphone will be turned off in preparation for the next speaker. Our first speaker will be Patty Gro.
Good evening. My name's Patty Gro. I'm in the Huron Valley School District, and my public comment is regards to the removal of the pride flags at the local high schools. So back in the twenty-twenty-two and twenty-three school year, there were seventy individuals that came together to draft the Huron Valley School Strategic Plan. And the very first question that they were asked to address was how do we meet the social, emotional needs of our students? That was the very first question. And that focus was deliberate, because at the heart of education is the well-being of our students. So from that process came five goal statements, and among them, number four, which is social, emotional support. By removing the pride flags from Lakeland, Milford, and the IA high schools, we're not supporting a primary objective of meeting the social and emotional needs of our students. In fact, we're stepping away from that very goal. These flags are signs of welcome and safety, and they tell every student that you belong here. When students or their friends feel unwelcome or unseen, their ability to learn, connect, and thrive is diminished. When they feel accepted and supported, they soar. So as a parent and a community member, I want to remind us that the shared vision created back in twenty-twenty-three, which is a vision meant to take us all the way to twenty-twenty-eight, that plan calls for inclusivity, compassion, and a system of emotional support. We cannot meet those goals while removing visible symbols of belonging. So as a business owner, I've seen firsthand how diversity of thought and perspective makes organizations stronger. The same is true for our schools. Welcoming environments help students think bigger and build a more hopeful and exciting future. So I urge the board today to reconsider the removal of the pride flags from our schools and our classrooms. Let's honor the spirit of our strategic plan and ensure that every student feels seen, safe, and valued in our Huron Valley public schools. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you very much. Next is Tara Spencer.
Hi, my name is Tara Spencer. Um, I belong in the South Lion School District. I have a child at the IA, so we are here quite often. I'm here to speak about the removal of the pride flags specifically from the IA just a few weeks ago. I myself am a former kindergarten teacher, and I know at our school, like most others, it was full of encouraging signs for kids to be kind and show empathy and be respectful to others. In today's world, that pride flag represents all these things. For example, if I, a straight white, middle-aged lady, had my car break down in the middle of a neighborhood, and I saw a flag, um, a pride flag wa- waving on one house, that is exactly the house that I would go to first. Because that flag is a symbol that means normal people live here, and I will be treated with kindness, empathy, and respect. The pride flag has evolved beyond a sign for only the queer community. It's now a global symbol for kindness, empathy, and respect. These are not political ideas. These IA kids are the top one percent of learners in our area. These are the smartest of the smart. They are the kids that could out-mass many of us when they were in middle school. I think it really says something that this is an issue that the students took action on immediately. They chalked the walkways. They staged a massively successful turnout, um, sorry, a successful walkout. Many of them are here today, and many more will be here at the next meeting. And it made me think, how often does this happen? It's important to them. These students are taught how to think critically, how to view the world, um, how to view the worldwide issues from all perspectives. They are the future leaders of this country. And here is where they are, and this is what they stand for. This is what is important for their futures, and they will not relent. In conclusion, us teachers know that before we can expect a child to learn one single thing in a classroom, they must feel safe. By removing pride flags, you have pulled back a layer of that safety, not just for queer kids, but for all kids looking for a place to feel safe. In their world, where they are forced to participate in active shooter drills and learn what to do if they find fentanyl in a hallway, giving a teacher the choice to display a symbol of kindness, empathy, and respect should not be too much to ask for. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Sorin Spencer.
Hello, I'm Sorin Spencer, a sophomore at the International Academy West Campus. Um, I'm here to contest the, I'm sorry, um, I'm here to contest the policy against pride flags in classrooms. First things first, pride flags are not political. For an item to be political, it must promote a certain political party or ideology, and hu- and human identity are ni- is neither of those things. The only thing that pride flags promote is support for all people, regardless of any factors that seem to define them. When I first came to the IA, I was pleasantly surprised by how many teachers had pride flags displayed. It was a symbol of silent camaraderie, indicating that I was in the safe space. Schools are meant to be a safe place where students can learn and express themselves as they please, and the removal of these items strips away an extension of the support, which sends a very poignant message to us students. We know that our teachers' personal views haven't changed, and they will continue to support us regardless of our identities, but it indicates that the school and district itself won't. The removal of such a harmless sign of support is frankly frightening to us. I'd like to share a personal anecdote relating to the removal of these pride flags. I am a transgender man, and revealing this part of myself at school was a daunting task. Last year, I began to tell my teachers. Naturally, I first came out to my teachers who had pride flags on display, because this indicated that they would be a supportive person. As for the teachers who didn't, not only did I come out to them months or even a full year later than other teachers, I went out of my way to check with others that they were supportive people out of fear that I would receive a negative reaction. I shouldn't have to worry about this type of thing. If this policy and removal of visible support remains in place, I worry about the queer students of the future. Will they have the courage to come out to their teachers, if at all? If there's no indication that the, that the International Academy or Huron Valley Schools as a whole is a safe place where all students will be treated with equity and will be free of discrimination of any kind. It starts here. Where does this end? The people who speak in front of you today are far from the only people who take issue with this policy. The student body of the International Academy as a whole is un- is unhappy with this policy. From the moment it got released, there was mass discourse and unrest. This peaked when, on the sixth of November, a fellow student and I led a school-wide walkout in which we gained the participation of around forty to fifty percent of the school. And many of those who stayed behind only did so out of fear of judgment from their families, teachers, and peers. It's not just queer students. It's all students who view this policy as a violation of free speech and a removal of extension of support from, for a portion of our school's population. Listen to your students. Regardless of identity, we came together on the sixth to fight this policy, and we will continue to do so until change is made. We refuse to stand by. I, as well as many others, urge you to reclassify pride flags as a non-political item and reallow them in classrooms. Please bring back a visible, clear, and safe environment for all students. Please bring back a visible, clear, and safe environment for all students. It's not political, it's simply the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mark Spencer.
Thank you for your time, everyone. My name is Mark Spencer. I'm a parent of a student at IA, and I'm here to discuss concerns on the removal of pride flags from the classroom. Policies enacted to protect and promote safety must be improved, transparent, and communicated more effectively. As a starting point, the school board must properly define the term "political activities" and the scope it covers. Human identity is not political. It's being human. When my family first toured International Academy in twenty-twenty-three, we feel greeted into a community that celebrated all people, regardless of background or identity. I was even excited to see IA's staff could freely celebrate their own identity and foster safety, kindness, and progress. optionally, optionally, pride and progress flags were allowed in classrooms throughout the school. For me, this created a welcoming, safe learning environment for all people. Certainly did not tell me a political stance, told me what kind of people worked here. Huron Valley School District's existing nondiscrimination statements help set the boundaries of appropriate behavior towards people. Taking an excerpt from the policy on the HVS website, just excluding the citation references, no person shall on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, or ancestry, sex, disability, height, weight, or marital status be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subject to discrimination during any program, activity, service, or unemployment. In twenty-twenty-three, HVS passed a new policy to further help students grow and develop and keep out political activities that do not substantially contribute to a positive learning climate and may be disruptive, divisive, and distracting. That's great. Throughout twenty-three, twenty-four, no red or blue rhetoric would be permitted in the classes. It would remain neutral, continuing to foster openness and growth. And then we got to twenty-five, certain political leader has been allowed to rally bigots across the nation to his side, and now those hateful leaders have come to our schools, our teachers, and for our kids. The twenty-three policy around political activities been weaponized, any decor representing pride or the queer community has been purged from the schools. Over two years of safety has been eliminated for a class of people, not against politics. If anyone feels that they're being discriminated against unfairly, I am happy to know that there's a HVS policy to report any kind of threatening behavior. Removing someone's identity or ability to express one's identity may very well be construed as psychological abuse, as stated in that policy. Thank you for your time. Redefine political activities to exclude human identity. They're not the same.
Thank you for your comments. Next I have, I have to put my glasses on, sorry about that, Heidi Pilgrim.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Pilgrim. I'm a senior at the IA West, and my home school is Lakeland High School, so I am in the district. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. Just like my friends, I'm also talking about the removal of pride flags in our schools. So, and also I just wanted to add, I've spoken to the board before on behalf of the robotics team, but I'm purely speaking on behalf of myself today. So our schools recently removed all pride flags and pride symbols, and these were removed because they were considered quasi-political, and those were the words of my principal because me and a group of friends were very curious as to why this was suddenly an issue. So he directed us to policy thirty-two, thirty-one A., and he said that it was district policy to remove anything considered quasi-political or political. So I'd like to share my opinion and challenge this idea. The word quasi-political means almost political, and I understand why some people might say that because conversations about identity and sexual orientation can overlap with social debates. However, calling a flag quasi-political can be a way to avoid what it truly represents, which is inclusion, safety, and belonging. The original pride flag, the one that's just the rainbow, was created in nineteen-seventy-eight by Gilbert Baker. Each color represented a positive aspect of life. Just to quickly run through them, red meant life, orange, healing, yellow, sunlight, green, nature, indigo, harmony, violet, spirit. Labeling these things as quasi-political is avoiding the real issue, that some people are uncomfortable with visibility for certain groups. But discomfort is not enough to call a symbol political. Displaying a pride flag is about recognizing that LGBTQ+ people exist in our schools. I think it's safe to say that acknowledging someone's existence is not political. In addition, taking down these flags unintentionally sends the message that LGBTQ students are not welcome. The pride flag doesn't stand for a political party or a policy platform. It stands for people of all sorts who identify as LGBTQ. It is not, nor never has been, about promoting one viewpoint over another. It's about making sure every student knows that they are seen, valued, and provided a safe space. Our district talks about preparing students to thrive in a diverse world and fostering respect for all individuals. The pride flag directly supports that. It being displayed sends the message that all are welcome, and for some students, that message can make the difference between feeling supported and feeling invisible. We allow other symbols that promote inclusion and learning, such as anti-bullying and mental health awareness. Why does the line get drawn at LGBTQ? A pride flag, much like these other symbols, stands for kindness, respect, and equality. Therefore, I ask the board to reconsider what it means for all students all over the board, or sorry, all over the district, to see these symbols of identity ripped from the walls. I want you to think about what kind of message that sends to everyone. If a flag makes a student feel welcome and safe, then it isn't political, it's a necessity. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes our public comment for this evening. I don't have any more forms, so I think we're all set. And we're going to take a brief recess for two minutes, and we'll come right back. All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. Thank you for your patience as we took a little brief recess there. Next, we move on to the consent agenda, and in order to approve the consent agenda, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Grisomkowski. Do we have support?
All support.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Roll call, please. Ms. Grisomkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
And Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, unfinished business. We're going to start with the approval of the maintenance and operation pickup truck purchase, exhibit B.
Yes, thank you. During our last meeting, Mr. Van Goghtham introduced this topic. We've had a couple of conversations at our finance and operations meetings, a number of questions were asked through that process, and details have been communicated. I haven't had further questions, have you, Mr. Van Goghtham? So we would ask for your approval of the MNO pickup truck as presented. Clearly, snow is here.
It is. All right, can we have a motion?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman, support.
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approve the maintenance and operations pickup truck purchase as presented. This purchase also includes a snowplow. Timing is of the essence since we had a first snowplow.
Mr. Wiseman, we need a motion and then a second, then we can chat. So we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Support.
Support. All right, now we can open. Let's talk about the plow, sir.
Yeah, it has a plow that's attached, which is very appropriate at this point in time so that we can keep school open.
Yes.
And so Dr. Sala doesn't cause snow day.
That's right, that's right. All right. I know, all of a sudden, I'm second guessing buying this truck. Other comments? Yes, ma'am.
So just quickly, we have, let's see, two different things on our agenda tonight, and I just want to note, we're using local businesses, businesses that support our community. So I just want to say, I'm appreciative of the fact that not only are we getting a really great price for this truck, but we're using local businesses, and I just think that's great for our community, and I appreciate that.
Agreed.
President Dodd?
Yes.
Yeah, if I could add to that, that is from La Fontaine, and it also includes not only the estate discount because we're part of a consortium, obviously, with the state, and I believe there's another discount that we're getting too on this.
Yep, it's good, we're getting the friends and family treatment, they're making sure we get all the proper discounts, it's local, we're supporting a small business that supports us, and can't do much better than that. So with that, I'd like to call for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Grisomkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we're skipping B. because that is resolved, moving to C., additional school safety purchases, exhibit D.
Yes, thank you, and I'm asking Mr. Van Goghtham to speak to this one.
Thank you, Dr. Sala. So several months ago, we came to the board asking for some dollars specifically tied to an additional school safety purchase that we did not get into too much detail at the board level from, but I had extensive talks at the committee levels and answered questions regarding what we were proposing or thinking of doing with some of our building site sinking fund dollars. It was an estimate at that point based on, you know, really a new solution that we were considering, and to finish up this solution, we were asking the board for an additional hundred thousand dollars so that we can complete the project that's essentially seventy-five percent done. And so not getting into too much detail as to what we're doing with those dollars, the board members are familiar with what we asked for several months ago, and this is just a final ask to finish that project.
All right, thank you very much. Can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the additional school safety purchase as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Grisomkowski. Support?
All support.
All right, thank you very much. Open up for discussion. I will just share that we are very cautious anytime we discuss school safety and security to make sure the people who are on the need-to-know basis know, and that we're not telling everyone in the community exactly what we do in order to keep our schools safe. We are following best practices and recommendations from all the right people, and this is an expense that will help make sure that we are aligned with some of the best practices out there. Those who are involved in our Safety and Security Committee will probably learn a little bit more, so we do have community members involved in these discussions, but that's why we're a little vague about this purchase, but we do have civilians involved in this at some level, so we make sure that we do have community input and involvement. Okay, if there is no other discussion, we will do a roll call vote, please. Ms. Grisomkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
And Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion. All right, wonderful. Next, under unfinished business, data center bid, exhibit E.
So this is another one that has been presented to multiple committees, has also come before this board, and we have not had any additional questions. I think everybody's familiar with the solution that's being proposed here, so we would ask for board approval as presented.
All right, thank you very much. Can we have a motion, please? Mr. Wiseman.
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approve the data center bid as presented.
Thank you very much. Support?
I'll support that.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Pistana. Any discussion? Nope, we discussed at the last meeting that this is a really smart solution. It is luckily not the most expensive solution because so often in IT and tech, the most expensive solution seems to be the right one. But the team did an excellent job, really working through scenarios, figuring out what could work, and in the world we're in today, making sure that we keep data secure and safe, accessible, and the systems running well is top priority. So I appreciate all the work that went into this, and I will remind everyone that we are doing this with funds from the two thousand nineteen Capital Projects Bond Fund. So without the community support, some of this stuff would be really, really hard to do, so we appreciate the community, as always, for their support of the schools in our bond campaign in two thousand nineteen. With that, we will do a roll call vote, please. Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Grisomkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
And Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. New business, first thing we're starting with is personal communication devices administrative guidelines.
Okay, so if we could bring up the presentation. Thank you. So I'm going to walk us through where we are today with this personal communication devices slash cellphone administrative guideline. So for those who are familiar, an administrative guideline is essentially the way with which we will interpret and implement board policy. So we have a board policy already in place, it's board policy five-one-three-six, and it relates to the way with which our board has asked the administration to interpret and adopt cellphone approaches to the organization. The AG, the administrative guideline, was really loose in terms of how that cellphone policy could be implemented by building. And so what we saw as a result of that, you know, students using their phones constantly, being disrupted during instructional time, constantly receiving text messages, being distracted by social media, listening to music during instructional time, constant disruptions to the instructional day. And so I'll point you to the slide that's in front of you because what I want to share is that the district has taken a really in-depth and methodical approach to examining the question of how we want to implement cellphone policies in our school district. We didn't just knee-jerk, make a reaction, we've been talking about this since October of two thousand twenty-four. So if I walk you through this timeline, in October twenty twenty-four, the board and COAT team received the board. Thank you. So, I'm gonna walk us through where we are today with, uh, this personal communication devices slash cellphone administrative guideline. So, for those who are familiar, uh, an administrative guideline is essentially the way with which we will interpret and implement board policy. So, we have a board policy already in place. We're, it's Board Policy 5136, and it relates to, uh, the way with which our board has asked the administration to, uh, interpret and adopt, uh, cellphone approaches to the organization. The AG, the administrative guideline, was really, uh, loose in term, in terms of how that cellphone, uh, policy could be implemented by building. And so, what we saw as a result of that, you know, students using their phones constantly, uh, being disrupted during instructional time, constantly, uh, receiving text phone, text messages, uh, being distracted by social media, uh, listening to, to music during instructional time, constant destruction, disruptions, uh, to, to the instructional day. And so, I'll point you to, to the slide that's, that's in front of you, because what I wanna share is that the district has taken a really in-depth and methodical approach to examining the question of how we want to implement cellphone policies in our school district. We didn't just knee-jerk, make a reaction. We've been talking about this since October of 2024. So, if I walk you through this timeline, in October 2024, the board and COAT team received the book, Anxious Generation. On February 26th, the board held its biannual board study session where we discussed, uh, the research findings of anxious generation, the impact of social media on student achievement, uh, as well as mental health of, of students who are frequently engaged in, in cellphone usage. We, uh, as a result of that study session, the board asked that the district conduct a survey. Uh, that survey included, uh, teachers, it, it included, uh, students, and it included families. We had 2,276 responses to that survey. And for those of you who have done surveying in a school district, I'm just gonna tell you, you don't get 2,200 people responding to surveys. Uh, you usually get a couple hundred if you're lucky. So, this showed a very, very high interest. And the findings were overwhelming. Parents and staff felt very strongly that cellphones and social media in particular are having a negative impact on their child, on their mental health, um, and on their ability to learn in school. Uh, and students, not surprisingly, were kind of a mixed bag. Uh, I would say, high school students recognized that social media and cellphones were having a negative impact on their ability to learn at the levels that they, that they knew they were capable of, uh, but not to the same degree as, as staff and as, uh, as parents. Uh, and then middle school had a very organized front. I'm impressed. Um, but they, they were probably the most critical of any sort of cellphone, uh, policy. Uh, so, I, I give our, our middle school kids, uh, a lot of props, because they did a nice job organizing their efforts and making their voices heard. So, we conducted that survey, uh, in April. We shared the results with the board in June of 2025. Uh, and then we, and then Harbor High School, after doing a lot of due diligence, requested, uh, implementing a pilot for our district, which, which they've done, and they've done a, a great job with the implementation of that pilot. I had an opportunity on September 23rd, uh, to visit with the Harbor staff and garner some feedback from them regarding how they felt that the pilot was going, and you heard the results of that, uh, pilot from Mr. Dowker today. Uh, October 6th, our Board of Education adopted a former, I, I, I'm sorry, a formal, uh, goal for our district through my superintendent goals, to review and offer a recommendation as it related to administrative guidelines. And so, I've, I've been working on that since, uh, the board adopted that policy. On November 6th, we had our, our biannual study session, which you've all heard, uh, today, and I presented the administrative guidelines to the board. Uh, and I'm here today, uh, presenting that AG to our community, um, as well as we had an opportunity to hear from, from Mr. Dowker regarding the pilot. And then finally, uh, if there is no additional feedback from the board between now and January 20th, we would like to implement the administrative guideline that I'm presenting to you today, uh, during the second semester of the current school year. So, with that, if you think about these administrative guidelines, it's sort of scaffolding, um, uh, parameters by level, elementary, middle, and high school, with the restrictions, uh, bec, being the most stringent at the elementary level, and then giving a little bit more freedom at the middle school level, and then finally, at the high school, the most freedom, based upon the, obviously, the ages of the students and their ability to handle, uh, some of these responsibilities, uh, and really having full, uh, capabilities and, and understanding of, of how to really put away or giving us their cellphones when they, when they enter a classroom. You, you get a sense of how this is going to work. So, at the elementary level, the core restriction is basically no access to cellphones at all, or smartwatches, or AirPods, or, uh, personal communication, uh, devices of, of any sort. So, students in, in grades pre-K through five are, would be prohibited from using their PCDs, including cellphones, powered on at any time during the school day. And the term "powered on" is defined in the, in the AG itself. So, you can, you can dig into more detail, uh, regarding some of the, the nuances and definitions. And then definition of the school day at the elementary is, the school day begins when the student enters the school building or the district-owned vehicle, the school bus, and includes all instructional periods, lunch, passing time, and transportation on school-sponsored trips. The school day ends at the conclusion of the final class period, or when the child exits a district-owned vehicle. So, why do we include district-owned, owned vehicle in this, in this conversation? Because sometimes, uh, elementary-age kiddos have phones on buses, and they're showing images to friends on buses that are not appropriate for elementary-age children to see, um, and taking pictures and broadcasting those pictures to peers on the bus, which is not appropriate. And so, we made the decision that, uh, including buses was important, and that was a conversation that we had with, uh, with our, uh, building principals as well, who, uh, manage disciplinary issues that transpire on the buses as a result of, of cellphones. So, you'll notice, elementary, most restrictive. Really, no access to cellphones, smartwatches, personal communication devices. As we move to middle school, you'll notice that the core restriction is, for grades six through eight, cellphones and, and PCDs are prohibited from, uh, being used, um, or being powered on at any time during the school day. So, the school day is defined when the student enters the school building and includes all instructional periods, lunch, passing time, and transportation on school-sponsored trips. The school day ends at the conclusion of the final class period. So, when you read the actual administrative guideline, this does allow greater flexibility for middle school, because we understand that, you know, I know when my kids were in sixth grade, both my wife and I worked. Uh, they would go home to an empty home, and we wanted them to have a cellphone when they were getting into the house, so they could text us or call us and let us know that they arrived home safely. So, we felt it was important to allow middle school-aged children, uh, to be able to access a cellphone, uh, or a personal communication device to communicate with their families, uh, recognizing that that tends to happen in, in grade six. Uh, they might be home for a, a short period of time alone, uh, whereas that does, does not, and really should not happen, um, at the elementary, uh, level. Um, so, we did not prohibit use of, of PCDs on the bus to and from school for middle school-age students, um, except for the prohibition of using cameras and, uh, showing, uh, or their photo rolls. We don't want students taking out, uh, their phones and showing images to other students on, on the bus. Um, you could, you might imagine, middle school-aged children sometimes have things on their phone they shouldn't, and sometimes they show those images to their friends, and it ends up resulting in phone calls from, from parents and guardians who are not happy with what their child saw, um, on a friend's camera roll. And so, finally, the least restrictive is when we get to the high school, uh, level. So, students in grades nine through 12 are prohibited from using or having their personal communication devices, including cellphones, powered on during instructional periods, including seminar, what I need, or other time allocated for purposes of teaching and learning. That's the distinction at the high school level. Time periods dedicated to teaching and learning, cellphones should, will not be used, uh, as they create disruptions. And that means, if the student is done with a test, and, uh, the rest of the class is still taking the test, there's still not to use their cellphones, because what we find is, when you allow those exceptions, you just lose track completely, and it's impossible to police or, or manage. So, we don't wanna put our teachers in that position where they're trying to make exceptions, you know, in one case, and allowing in the other case, because that's the kind of situation we're in right now. And we're asking our teachers to do something class by class, which is just impossible for them to manage, and it's creating a disruption to the instructional day. So, students, you, you'll note at the high school level, students may access their personal communication devices during passing time and lunch. Uh, and then, there's a special note here that Harbor will follow the middle school policy, because that is what they're currently doing, and it works very well with them. Uh, they're a smaller building. Um, they have a greater ability to police this, uh, and that, that works, that works for them. Uh, and so, for purposes of definition of the school day, the school day begins when the student enters the school building and includes all instructional periods. The school day ends at the conclusion of the final class period. So, you'll notice, greatest flexibility, uh, is with our, our secondary buildings, or, and, in particular, with our high schools. So, another note I, I would reference, and while it's not up here on the screen in front of you, it is within the body of the administrative guideline, and that comes to implementation. So, we, we do not wanna be in the business of trying to police individual students' personal communication devices, and our principals are very busy as it is. You heard Mr. Dowker say that prior to this year, almost 50% of the disciplinary issues he was having related in some way, shape, or form to cellphones or cellphone usage. If a child is found with a cellphone, not following the protocols and the processes that we implement in our buildings, we are not going to argue with the, with the child. The, the simple course of action will not be, you know, progressive discipline. It will be, we take the cellphone from the student. We, uh, turn it into the main office. It goes in a locker, and the parent will be responsible for picking that cellphone up, um, either at the end of the day or the next school day. So, we really wanna urge students that, once we get to implementation of this, uh, this administrative guideline, that they follow the rules. Uh, otherwise, they will lose access to their cellphones, and their parents will have to, to come and, and retrieve them. Uh, we've seen some school districts try to implement policies like this, where they say, okay, you're gonna get a warning, and then they get a warning. Um, and then it becomes a, okay, now you're going to get a, get, get a detention, and then it becomes a, you know, in-school suspension, and then it becomes a out-of-school suspension. First of all, I don't wanna suspend students for cellphones. I want them in school. I want them learning. Um, a, and I don't want our teachers to try and police this and manage all of these different progressive aspects of, of discipline. And so, the, the bottom line is, if you have it, and you're not supposed to, it gets turned into the office, and it needs to be retrieved by a parent or guardian, um, at some point. Of course, you know, we'll work with families, uh, on this. If it's a one-time thing, you know, our, our principals will, will work with families to, to, um, uh, get, get the child back, you know, get the child their cellphone back. But it just can't be a, a reoccurring sort of, sort of, uh, problem. So, um, this also includes AirPods. And, you know, for our high school students, you all have AirPods. They're a great, they're a great technology. I have AirPods. Um, but I see you wearing them in classrooms when teachers are teaching. It's not beneficial to the instruction that's happening in those classrooms. I mean, when you have an AirPod in, and you get a, and you get a text message, it's dinging in your ear, you're, it's reading you the text. You can't focus on two things at once, and we want you to be successful in school. So, this administrative guideline is designed to help all of our students be successful. It's designed to follow the, the research, um, and the study that we did as a school district. It's designed to support the feedback we heard through the survey results that we received. It's designed to support our teachers, so they aren't trying to, to, to be the cellphone police, but can focus on teaching and learning. And it's designed to create consistency across the organization. So, we're not, we're no longer guessing what our, our cellphone approach is, and it's not up to the, it's not up to the discretion of each individual teacher. We're taking that responsibility away from them, so that we have a consistent practice across the organization, and everybody knows it's a, it's a non-negotiable. Um, so, I'm happy to take any questions. We did discuss this, you know, ad nauseam during the, uh, board study session. I'm happy to take any questions, uh, from the board this evening. Uh, also happy to take any feedback or additional thinking and ideas, uh, from the board. We have some time before we, we move to implementation. But we did wanna put this out there for our, our community and the listening audience as well. So, so I know some have been following this, uh, conversation very closely, and it's, it's coming to, to fruition.
Thank you, Paul. I know we're not, we do not need to take any action on this. So, this is an administrative guideline. We, we take action on policy, uh, and then you and the administrative team, um, take the action to create guidelines to, um, to implement that policy. And we talked a little bit about why. And I think a big reason for why is, if something doesn't work with this, if we find that there needs to be some fine tuning to the guideline, they don't wanna have to come back to us to approve this. We're just saying, make it work. And we know that six months in, a year in, we may find, A, there's new technology that we didn't know about, we have to think about including, or B, something that, that's in here isn't working. So, that's the reason administrative guidelines are so important, and the difference between the guideline and the policy is so you can adapt and adjust as needed without having to come back to us for, um, nitty-gritty approval of a policy. I do think it's important, though, that we, that, that the community knows, and the families know, and the kids know, and the, the teachers know that we are supportive of this. That's why we've, we've done a lot of work on this. You said ad nauseam at the this study sess, session, also the study session before that. So, we have talked about this a lot, and we know, we, we know. Amy and I sat with a student who was really, um, fearful, uh, at high, at the high school level of giving up her phone. She had had relationships with, with people in Oxford, and, and the idea of having that with her offered her some safety and security that Amy and I could not understand. We certainly offer the empathy for that, but we, we, you know, as young people in a school during an era of, of school violence, we, we don't understand that like she did, and we appreciated her perspective. And I think that's part of the reason that the high school policy is a little bit different than the middle school and the elementary policies. Uh, so, with that, I'll open it up to, um, to comments and, and, and anything the rest of the board would like to say. But I wanted to clarify just those few things, um, a, as it relates to what we do here for, uh, for these administrative guidelines. So, does anyone else have comments? Amy?
I'm sorry to be so chatty this evening. Um, my, my only concern with cellphone policies is how, um, innovation in education and work within the classroom would be impacted. We do have some classes that are utilizing cellphones for video, for example. Um, will those educators and those schools, will they, they have some latitude with that, so that students could utilize their video for, uh, you know, creation and utilize their phones for that purpose? Um, because I think, you know, that happens in the workplace. I use my cellphone for lots of things, um, throughout the day, some of them worthy, some of them not so much. Um, but there's a lot of work. So, do we have that kind of latitude within these guidelines to help our teachers? Otherwise, are we buying new technology?
That's a great question. Uh, you know, that's why they call these guidelines, because we need to be flexible to a degree with some of those outlier circumstances that any policy or any guideline will not cover. Uh, a, a great example, you mentioned, of like a video production class. The, the cameras on these things are incredible. And, and while we are very fortunate that our board, that our community has supported bond proposals, and we've been able to, to transition to a, a one-to-one district from a Chromebook perspective, we haven't purchased every child a, a cellphone, and we haven't purchased every child an, an iPad. iPads might accomplish that goal. If we have a set, we may be able to use iPads instead of cellphones. But we will, of course, remain flexible and recognize, and have situational awareness to recognize those instances where it might be important. I think another great example, Ms. Grisimskowski, would be a student who might be diabetic, and they might have a health reason to keep their cellphone on them. Of course, we're going to allow that child to keep their cellphone on them. They just need to follow the rules. The, the rules might look a tiny bit different for, for a child that needs a, a cellphone to monitor their, their blood glucose levels and, and things of, of that nature.
Thank you. Good question. Other questions, comments? Ms. Ryan?
Yes, I will real quick. At first, I was, my gosh, what if something happens, and my daughter doesn't have her cellphone, and I can't reach her? And I talked to another educator friend of mine, and she said, Michelle? And I talked to another educator friend of mine, and she said, Michelle, if that's happening, your daughter needs to be worried about getting safe, not texting you. And it kind of put a different perspective on her having or not having her cellphone. And if she watches this, she's going to be so mad at me. But, you know, it just put a different perspective on it, that they need to be getting safe, not texting, you know?
I think that is a really important point. And I know of all the feedback we heard, the biggest fear is around safety and security. And so I think it's important to know that while we are going to be prohibiting cellphones during instructional time, especially at the high school level, the the plan theoretically at this point is going to be for them to turn those in when they walk into the class and grab them when they leave. So we have to talk about what that looks like from an implementation perspective. But it's not, one, it's not that they will not have access to their phone in the case of emergency, okay? And that's one. Two, you heard Mr. Dowker say, and you just said it, when we're in the middle of an emergency, we don't want kids calling nine-one-one and and or calling moms and dads, because what happens is we can't get through to nine-one-one, meaning the administration, and and parents can't do anything to help their child in that situation. So what we want kids to do is follow the instructions of the teacher who's been trained in run, hide, fight protocols to 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 barrier themselves in a classroom safely, to remain quiet, and to allow the district to follow its protocols and and get law enforcement engaged in in those types of those types of volatile type situations.
Thank you. Other comments? Tom, yeah?
I know that you've had discussion about this, but my concern would be communication. Mr. Dowker made a comment about theoretical, and then when it actually occurs, all the questions that people might have and so on and so forth. So I think communication is going to have to be the key between now and implementation. And implementation actually begins, what, second semester? Is that what the plan is? So it's very important, and I think it's also important as it relates to being transparent, is the steps that we took. The timeline that you provided earlier in your your presentation is extraordinarily important, I believe, because it's not something that we just knee-jerked. It was something that we studied, and we, as a school board, endorsed you as our superintendent to come up with a plan and a guideline, which you've you've done. So the district in the Board of Education has endorsed a plan. And one of our roles is obviously teaching and learning as a board of education. And I I truly believe that this is based on all the information I have and from our pilot and from conversations. This is one thing that we can do to improve instruction for our students and and the outcomes of our students. So I not only support this, but at the same time, I think the timeline and from a parent's standpoint, the timeline's important, and a communication is extraordinarily important.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. Other questions, comments? No? All right, we're not voting. We're offering support and encouragement. And, you know, obviously, this is a time for questions and and, you know, working the plan, making sure it's it's sound. And and if there are, if there are questions from the community, communications@hvs.org or right to you?
Yes, yes, that'd be great. And we will plan a full-fledged communication campaign that will include, you know, social media rollout, video rollout. I'll deliver a message to the community. As questions come up, we will put together an FAQ to answer any questions that might exist. That seems to be a pretty powerful approach with our community, and people really seem to appreciate those those FAQs. We have our, we have a secondary principals meeting this Thursday, and we have one with the elementary next Thursday. And so we're going to be working through some of the practical questions because it, I mean, it looks different at Harbor than it will at Lakeland and Milford. It will look different at our middle schools than it will at our high schools. And so, you know, and our principals are the right people to sort of think through logistically how to make this work. And then the same will be true with our our elementary principals. And we'll be flexible and adapt and adjust and and, you know, do what is common sense and and makes it makes good sense for our kids and the district overall for teaching and learning.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, moving on to B, sale of the 2026 school building and site bond, series one, exhibit G.
Okay, and I would turn that one over to Mr. Van Goghtham.
Thank you, Dr. Slaugh. So the school district proposed to the community a no-tax rate increase that would generate three hundred and sixty-one point three million dollars over three bond series. There would be school building and site bonds. The community accepted that proposal in May of two thousand and twenty-four and approved us to sell those bonds over three series. As part of the bond approval process, the district worked with outside consultants on a timeline for the series of bonds to be sold. At this time, we're working with PFM, who is our financial advisor, and Truun Law Firm, which is our district bond attorney, and they have a timeline in place to sell the series one bonds by March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-six. And we are going to sell the first series for a hundred and seventy-five of the three hundred and sixty-one million dollars. What we have attached for you this evening is the authorizing resolution, which the board has to approve so that we can go through the necessary steps to sell the first series of bonds. You will also have a ratifying resolution once we do end up finding someone who wants to purchase our bonds, and and that would take place, again, sometime late winter, early spring. And then we would have money in hand for the work that we're proposing over the summertime and then over the next several years, because our bond series is probably going to be somewhere from selling this one in twenty-six to maybe twenty-nine and possibly thirty-one is our third series. So most of you have seen this type of information before. It's a very standard authorizing resolution, but I'm happy to take questions this evening. And then we do have a, I believe, three-week period between now and our next board meeting where we're happy to take additional questions at that point as well.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Van Goghtham. Questions? Mr. Wiseman, I see you moving through.
Yeah, just a couple, a couple of points that I think is important for our community to know. This is made possible because the community voted in favor of us issuing bonds back in two thousand and twenty-four. This is the first series because we guaranteed that the debt millage would not increase. So I'm assuming that this is going to, we're selling these, even though it was approved in twenty-four, we're selling them in twenty-six. Why the, why the wait?
Because we have other debt that is falling off, which allows us to go for this additional money without raising taxes or additional tax rate.
So we're paying off existing debt, which then gives us the ability to sell more bonds, keeping our millage rate exactly the same as it is right now.
Correct.
When we sell these bonds, they're, we sell them, do we sell them negotiated or competitive? How do we, how does that work?
So the district is typically, over the last several series, at least since I've been here, through competitive. At one point, we did try to do a negotiated sale, but it was like within one or two days of the real COVID effect on our country. So we had no one buying because no one was buying any bonds at the time, but we've been very successful with competitive, which is a very transparent process. We put an RFP out there for our bond sale, and then people come to us with purchase offerings. And so negotiated is is more of literally going to the market and having people individually buy anywhere from a thousand dollars worth of bonds all the way up to a hundred million or even the whole hundred and seventy-five million dollar package. And a competitive sale is basically someone bidding on our bonds, and they will buy all of the bonds. So they'll be dealing with one buyer essentially.
And these are tax-exempt bonds, correct?
Correct.
And because they're tax exempt, people do not pay taxes on them. So we see a more favorable rate that you would, that you as a consumer or as a residential individual for a mortgage, for example, would see, because you do not pay tax on 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 whatever your earnings are.
Correct. And the district currently has a A-bond rating, so these are attractive bonds to whoever will be bidding on these.
And the higher your rating as a school district, and we've just seen an increase in our rating because of our fiduciary responsibilities and how sound our finances are, we've seen our rating increase, which means our bonds are even that much more favorable.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good questions. Other questions or comments? I'm excited about the work we're going to do with this. Again, thank you to our community for, you know, allowing us even to dream. And new middle school will be will be coming, and I think that's a pretty exciting thing for us to think about. So thank you. If anybody has questions over the next three weeks, please reach out to Mr. Van Goghtham and or Dr. Slaugh with those questions, and we'll get them answered, and we will be prepared to vote on this at our next board meeting. Next, new business or yes, new business C, policy updates for twenty-two-ten, twenty-four-twelve, and eighty-three-oh-five.
Dr. Nemeth, you want to cover this one?
Sure. So we did, we did review these at the TLT meeting just through a quick, you know, passing out. We're going to spend a little more time with them this week at our TLT meeting, which is on Wednesday. So we'll do some more questions, and then we will, this will be a first read for the full board. We'll probably bring it back in December or a future meeting after we've had some discussion with the TLT subcommittee.
Great, thank you. So our board policies can be found on our website in the school, in the Board of Education section for the district. You can search in the board policies, because if you were to print them out, it would be very thick. So if you're ever curious about what a board policy is or if it applies to a certain situation, you can just go use that search function and search in there. We work with a company called Neola. Neola has drafted these policies, and then over the last five years, the board has reviewed every single policy and adopted every single policy. So that's why every policy looks like it's been touched recently, because we reviewed every single policy when we switched to Neola. Every quarter, Neola sends us changes to the policy, usually that are legally required based on changing legislation. So typically, that's the case. It usually isn't because they've decided beepers are out of style. We usually have to change those once things like that happen. So that's what we're doing. That's why we're doing this. We send them to committees, committees review. We look at the language and we we approve and or amend. So so that's happening. Thank you to the TLT committee for taking this one on. And we will review after you have reviewed on Wednesday. If there are changes to what we currently have, please send them out. And then, of course, if there are questions in the meantime, please, please do reach out. Okay. I'm impressed. We're at eight sixteen, and we still have seven people sitting here listening. So thank you for your fortitude this evening. That might be a record. Moving on to our special addition to the end of the meeting is a discussion about thirty-one AA. You've heard us mention this in almost every committee meeting agenda and also Dr. Slaugh's comments, my comments. This is the the pressing topic of the moment right now for Michigan Public Education. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Slaugh.
Thank you, Madam President. So board, you have in front of you, I I placed them at each of your table areas, a legal analysis regarding a possible lawsuit, possible legal actions. And it is covered under attorney-client privilege, so I won't go through and and read, you know, the entirety of the document. But it does a really, really nice job outlining the challenges that we have been discussing as an administrative team as well as a board related to the constitutionality of using economic coercion to force a legal entity to take action, to do something at the at the peril of waiving its its constitutional rights. So I, you know, this is my eighth year as superintendent of Huron Valley Schools. You know, for those who are in our community, I've had many, many conversations with so many of you over the years. And I would say this community, more so than any other community I've ever served, there's a lot of constitutionalists, a lot of people who feel very strong about their constitutional rights, as they should. And so when we talk about thirty-one AA, what we're talking about as problematic are the blatant, blatant violations to use the Constitution, to to get us to waive our constitutional rights as an organization, along with each individual employee and the board, in order to accept dollars to do what should be a basic necessity, which is providing school mental health supports and safety and security for our buildings. So for some context, we've received thirty-one AA money now for the better part of three or four years. Last school year, you may remember that as a part of the school aid budget, the legislature slashed thirty-one AA money in half. It went from three hundred million dollars for for all five hundred and forty school districts across the state to one hundred million dollars. And there was a public outcry amongst parents, community members, school districts, superintendent groups, the the MEA and and other other bargaining groups, because it it felt wrong uniformly that the legislature would attack safety and security and mental health dollars in such a time as now, when we we need those dollars more than ever, when we have more okay-to-say tips than we've ever had had before. So the legislature heard that outcry, and they passed a supplemental bill reinstituting the full dollar amount. And what we heard from legislators over the span of a full year was that we were going to see school safety and security money, even though they didn't pass a budget on time, which they should have done by June thirtieth. And we had to build our budget based on a bunch of assumptions. At the end, at the end of the day, at the end hour, on September thirtieth, they passed the budget, and they did exactly what we didn't want them to do. They didn't read it. They passed the budget that that said, oh, yeah, we're going to reinstitute thirty-one AA money at three hundred million dollars. But then they decided to throw some caveats and loopholes in there, and they say, you only get the money if you waive your Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment due process rights. And so I want to be really, really clear here. It's about a million dollars to Huron Valley Schools. It's a hundred and forty dollars per pupil. They, what they're saying as a part of this school aid act, this portion of the school aid act, is you have to agree to an investigation in the case of a mass casualty event. No problem. We don't have any problems with that as a school district. Our our doors are wide open. We have a security audit every single year. I will put our safety and security protocols against anybody. If you see something we're doing we shouldn't be doing, we're all ears. I don't believe you can find it here. We're doing everything the right way. I have the utmost confidence in the trainings that we're doing and in the practices that we employ. The problem is they don't define mass casualty event. It could be a bus accident. That that, based on the definition that they have in this section of the school code, it could be a bus accident, it could be a food fight in the cafeteria, it could be any number of scenarios that are that are undefined and unnamed. And then, and then finally, and probably the most egregious aspect, is they require every employee in a local school district to waive privilege, meaning that you give away all rights in the process of of an of an investigation, which is a clear constitutional violation of the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendment. So so if the legislature would simply define mass casualty event and give us some clarity around what it means to waive all privilege, because they don't tell us what that even means, they just say waive all privilege, then we would be on board with accepting, you know, reasonable terms, whatever they whatever they may be. So we've we've appealed the legislature through lobbyists, through the education lobby. We've made efforts to have our voice heard. We're getting nowhere with the legislature or the governor on this particular issue. And so there is a group that is formulating a strategy for legal action, which I think at this point is prudent, because the deadline for accepting these dollars is November thirtieth. And so what I would like to ask this evening is that the board authorized me as superintendent to be able to engage in this legal action with this large group of other local school districts and school districts and intermediate school districts, uh, to, to stop this wrong and to compel the governor and the legislature to distribute these funds designed for safety and security and mental health without all these strings that they've, that they've attached. It feels wrong to me that they cut these funds two years ago and then they felt the pressure, so they reinstituted the funds, but now they're playing a game with, oh yeah, we're going to give you the funds, but we're going to make it so difficult for districts to sign off that so many districts aren't going to be able to access the funds. So my ask this evening is that you authorize me to be able to enter into this legal action. Um, and, uh, time is of the essence on this, unfortunately. We can't do two reads. Um, if we don't act this evening, uh, then, you know, we're going to have to, uh, kind of sit out on, on, on this one.
All right. So I'm going to just go through this, um, this resolution quickly. So I feel like you've already laid the groundwork for the background. Current status, current section thirty-one AA budget requires school districts to waive privilege in perpetuity without clearly defining the parameters that must be met to accept the insurance the legislature and governor have put forward to receive thirty-one AA dollars. This lack of clarity has raised a host of legal concerns that jeopardize the district's ability to qualify for dollars. And then the direction that, that we're being asked to take is it's recommended that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to enter into legal action along with several intermediate school districts and local school districts across the state. So in order for us to begin discussion, I need a motion for this, um, for this.
I'm going to say I recommend that our Board of Education authorize our superintendent to enter into legal action along with the several intermediate school districts and local school districts across our state.
Thank you, Ms. Cotter. Do we have support?
No support.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Grizankowski. All right. Let's open it up for discussion because I know whenever we talk about this, there's usually good discussion. So do we have?
All right. I like talking tonight.
Bring it on.
Sorry. Uh, we did have a really good, robust discussion at our, um, board, whatever that was. Thank you. Study session, I couldn't remember what it's called. Um, yeah, anytime you waive constitutional rights, that scares me. Um, however, we're talking about safety and security dollars. So I agree with Dr. Sala. If we had greater, um, clarity around what, what it means to be a mass, mass casualty, what it means to remove your, basically, we're talking about removing due process. Um, that is scary to me because it's not just due process as a board. We're not just saying we're going to remove due process and, um, confidentiality, attorney-client confidentiality with just the board. We're talking the entire district, everyone who works within the district. That, that is a, a, as an individual, I, I'm taking away someone's rights. And so I, I'm really struggling with this. At the same time, we've spent a great deal of money to harden our buildings. We have a threat assessment, such a, uh, procedure in place. We've got EduClima that will assist with that. We've hired many social workers. Um, we are doing everything in our power between our run, hide, fight and the training, which is all about human behavior. We are doing all of these things to make our schools as safe as possible. Those dollars add to that. But I can in good faith say, we're going to add a hundred and forty dollars per student, but we're going to take away your constitutional rights. I feel like that, I, I don't feel like I have, yes, I was elected, but I feel like that, I, I, that's beyond what my role should be as a board member, is to say, I'm going to take someone's constitutional rights away.
Thank you. You did a good job. Mr. Wiseman, I see you going for your mic.
Yeah. Um, I, I absolutely agree with my fellow board member as, as it relates to this. I, it shared at the board study session that I read and reread the, the three opinions. And, uh, when you talk about a million dollars, that really equates to providing opportunities for us to make certain that we have a safe and secure environment for our students. And I too applaud and agree with Dr. Sala that, uh, if, if they would define certain areas that are not defined presently, I would have no problem coming in, and somebody coming in, if the unfortunate happens in Huron Valley, because we're an open book. And I really am very proud of our district, and that means our district and our community, supporting all the efforts that we've done as it relates to safety and security. In fact, the last couple bond issues, one of the cornerstones of the bond issue was to provide dollars to provide safe and secure environments. And we know that not only have we hardened our, our, our buildings as it relates to safety and security, we've spent a significant amount of money as it relates to the mental health of our students because that can't be lost within this million dollars because it's not just hardware to make our building safe and secure, but it's also to provide quality opportunities for our children, taking care of the whole child, which is the mental health piece. As I said, I really struggled with this, but listening to my colleagues and listening to our superintendent, I support the fact that we need to go the next step to get some of these things clarified because they are absolutely not clarified in my mind. And once they are clarified, I would be more attuned to accepting those dollars because I think we've done a marvelous job as it relates to providing these things. And if we don't have that, then we have to kind of come up with a different avenue of approach to make certain that we are providing those services for our students. Because basically what they're saying is we're not going to fund it from the state standpoint. So district in one of our standards is safety and security. In fact, it's part of our strategic plan, isn't it? So we need to find a way of doing those types of things and conversations that we as a board have had is, uh, and one of the goals that our, our superintendent has is a strategy as it relates to taking a look at our, our funds and making a determination what our priorities are. So as I said before, I, I endorse this resolution. At the same time, I want to make certain that, uh, we take care of our own. And at the same time, when we talk about taking care of our own, I don't feel comfortable making that decision at this table when you're actually taking away in your voting on taking away the constitutional rights of all employees. And that's not, that's not right. That's just not right. So I think, uh, a lesson to be learned here in a model of, of what we are as a school board or what my role as a, one school board member is, is the model of behavior that, that is respectful, that we follow the due process that they've in essence taken away. And we as a, a board or I as a board member endorse us taking legal remedies to get some of these things defined. Because I say, said before, I feel very comfortable, anybody, you know, it, we do an audit all the time. We provide all kinds of mental health avenues for our students. We do a marvelous job, all right? But we need to get these things clarified before I would, I would feel comfortable accepting that additional dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. Other comments? My neck is tired from looking this way at the whole meeting. Other, over here? Cotter? Yes?
No, I just wanted to say that Amy and Tom totally summed up, I think, the way that our board has talked. Total lack of clarity and we can't move forward. Uh, this is for our teachers and our kids. So thank you to both of my board members for their comments.
All right. I feel like we're in a good spot. I, I want to just mention two quick things. Um, this does not impact any of the safety and security, uh, things that we have in place this year. So we have carryover money from last year, which was, is appropriate. And so, uh, we will not have to take action during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year to, um, determine where these funds are going to come from to pay for the things that we have this year.
One, one clarification on that point. So the board did take action to approve zebra canine's contract. We are paying for that out of general fund. That, that is a ninety thousand dollar expenditure that we've committed to. If you recall, there's a thirty, or I'm sorry, ninety day termination clause. And we were anticipating we were going to get some thirty-one AA money to offset that cost. So there is a ninety thousand dollar general fund expense that we are incurring right now and will continue to, to do so. And I don't, I'm not recommending that we not do that.
And my, and I think the point is that we've made the commitment to do it, we will do it. Um, so, so this really, and I think our board is, is already looking at how do we fund these very important, needed, um, services for our students for the future. So that's work for us to do on another day, not today. Uh, the other thing we've talked about is we are joining with a group as it relates to this law, this legal action. Therefore, the intention is the cost to our district will be minimal, if any. So, and we will keep an eye on that because, you know, anytime you say lawyer, I, you know, I hear the cash register running. So, uh, because we're joining in on this, we're not doing it alone, that should be a, a very minimal, if any, cost to our district and, and obviously you'll come back to us and let us know when that happens. So, um, we typically don't vote on the first read, but it's important that we do that tonight. So, um, I'd like to do a roll call vote, please. All right. Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Ms. Grizankowski?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Demick?
Yes.
And Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Thank you very much. Um, we're getting there. We're almost there. Hold on. We don't have any more public comment unless, I mean, we still have six. I'm impressed. No? Okay. Um, Good and Welfare.
It's my night to talk. Yay. Um, just wanted to congratulate Milford High School, uh, runner Kyle O'Rourke. He was fifth in the state for cross-country in one of the fastest fields I have seen in recent history. He ran a fifteen flat and he was the fifth fastest. It was the most incredible thing I've ever seen. So congratulations to Kyle. He represented incredibly well. And then lastly, um, we, we won't meet again until, uh, in December. So if you want to get into the holiday spirit, It's a Wonderful Life is, um, going to be presented at Lakeland High School. It's the first weekend in, of December. I hope that you will come out and, uh, see that, that amazingly wonderful, it's the best play ever. Wait, I might be a little, anyway, please come out and see it.
All right. Other Good and Welfare. Mr. Wiseman?
Once again, just remember a veteran. Tomorrow's Veterans Day officially. Uh, the valley is, is in a wonderful place and I personally want to say, thank our one member of the board who is a veteran, Mr. Demick. So thank you very, very much for your service.
I'm going to talk about the other play that's happening. I had both of them written down, but I only have to talk about one. So Milford High School will be presenting the musical, fall musical Between the Lines, November twenty-second and twenty-first. I did that sort of backwards, but Friday, the twenty-first and the twenty-second. Um, tickets are on sale now, I believe for both shows. So, um, so make sure you get your tickets ahead of time because popular shows, especially like It's a Wonderful Life, will likely sell out. Uh, and also, uh, just a word to veterans. I work for Oakland County and in the, and I manage the Veteran Services Department. If there are veterans out there in need of anything ever, please know that Oakland County Veteran Services is your place to call. They will work with you on getting the benefits you received, you deserve, but they'll also work with you on other things. Veterans in Oakland County will not go hungry and will not be homeless. So if anybody knows of a veteran in need, please reach out to Oakland County Veteran Services. They, um, they really are some of the best, the best of the best. Uh, and our veterans deserve to be, uh, honored and safe and they are a wonderful group of people who will do that. So with that, the meeting's adjourned.